I call this meeting to order and our first item is acceptance of the minutes of the instructional committee meeting of February 6, 2017. Any questions? Karen.
I just want to make a note that if we could accept them with the corrections that I just gave to the secretary.
Okay. Is that all right with everybody? Okay, so if we could accept them with the corrections that Karen just submitted. Shall we take consensus, all in favor? Or whatever, take consensus.
Yes.
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 And yes, thanks. Our next item.
We like that, don't worry. That's all good.
The next item is proposed approval of Lyman Hall and Sheehan trip to Montreal in Quebec, Canada on April 11th to 14th.
Okay, so we have a request before us. Your packet included, I have some additional details. There is a trip scheduled for April vacation and they have the requisite number of chaperones needed for the 30 students that are going, all our teachers. They are going with a tour and I have the address information for hotel, et cetera. And the purpose of the trip is to allow our students to experience French culture.
This is not their first time they've done this. This is, you bring, it's pretty much a, but to Carrie's credit, when we got this in one of your packet, we noticed, she noticed that there were some things missing. So she and Betsy worked diligently getting that information tonight and actually we said, "If you don't have that for the board, it's not going front of the board." So I just want to thank, you know, Betsy and Carrie for pulling that all together to make sure that they had everything for you this evening.
And I'm assuming it's the same itinerary, same locations. I mean, like I said, you indicated, right, it is Groundhog Day.
They're doing, they're great. Last year, I think, I think when we even were talking at one point, their trip was phenomenal.
Right, right. Well, we were under a lot of consternation last year, well, you were under a lot of consternation.
Yeah, variety of things. But yeah, this is the same trip every year. And again, the teachers, you'll recognize the names, these are usual.
Good. Any other questions? Take consensus, Amanda?
Yes.
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 And yes, thank you. And now we have some curriculum items and shall we group the two of these together? The two Spanish?
Yes.
So A and B.
C.
A and B, yeah.
Everybody's a comedian tonight.
So A and B, proposed adoption of new Spanish Unit Six, I'm sorry, Spanish Six, Unit One and Unit Two, Global Challenges and Personal and Public Identities.
Yes, these are just revisions to the units that had been previously taught.
Okay.
What you'll find is that, and I know you all have heard this before, that the units were, they keep getting modified because the students coming up with Spanish are coming with more years.
What a great problem to have.
It is. So that's why you're seeing these.
So basically, we're adding rigor.
Exactly.
You know, that's what, that's.
Depth of knowledge, really, significant, yeah.
I mean, how wonderful is that?
Yeah, so, that's that.
Very good. Any questions? You take consensus?
Yes.
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 And yes, thank you. And items C and D, we'll group together as well, some both probability and statistics, Unit Seven Intro to Inference and Unit Eight Inference and Practice.
And Kristi Medansi is here as math coordinator. I don't know if you want to, is there any questions for Kristi? She works diligently on these with her team, so I don't want to not give her an opportunity to share.
Do they have a textbook for this?
Yes, they do.
What's the probability of that? I don't know.
Oh my gosh, it doesn't end. It doesn't end tonight, yes.
I am. You started it.
You started it. No, you started it. No, you started it.
Do you need a new text?
Could you use the microphone, please?
I know you purchased something and some things are online. I get a lot of.
This textbook was purchased this past July, so it's a brand-new text.
Karen.
I really like that we're teaching our students at a younger age to know how to use statistical measures like chi-square, goodness-of-fit, that's really important. Goodness-of-fit, yes.
Well, that's a change to the course because it used to be a half-year course, so we didn't get to that. So now we are.
I think the sooner the students can learn how to understand statistics, the better that they can understand other things, especially if they should be looking at any kind of statistical reports to judge for themselves if, what the biases are.
Any research findings they need to know.
Exactly.
Yep.
Are you, are you talking about predictive analytics, artificial intelligence, N S O?
No.
I am seeing more and more of this stuff. If you ever want to talk about it, give me a call, whatever.
Sure.
I tell you, I got, I came out of a three-hour meeting this morning on it that I believe is going to completely transform the way that we operate as a result of being able to use predictive analytics. We're using it in technical stuff, we're using it in our material sciences, engineering group. It's really, it's amazing.
In medicine, too.
In medicine, well, that was the original application.
There's a very, very small.
Watson was in medicine, yeah.
There's a small introduction to that in our AP Statistics, but very little.
I wonder if you might give a call or an email if you, if you want, and you take a look at the stuff we're using. But I'm seeing it now all, all over the place. It's now, the cost point of it's gotten real low, so, you know, it can be widely used.
Another course, maybe.
Hmm?
Another course.
Data scientist, that's a big new thing now, right? You ran into it, Mike?
Yeah.
So that's what these guys are, these folks are doing with all of this now, is there's a huge demand for data scientist.
Data scientist.
Data, they're calling them data scientist, which are actually programmers, but using all this stuff for artificial intelligence and predictive analytics. Any other questions? You take consensus?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. You're off the hook or you have the next two?
I have the next two as well.
You have the next two, okay. ENF, Algebra II.
These are our last two units in the new course that we introduced this year, which is our Algebra II with Financial Applications.
Now, Unit Seven's Income Taxes and Unit Eight is Independent Living and Preparing Budget.
Unit Seven.
Are you teaching that one, Michael?
You're going to wait until the tax reform is passed?
Yeah.
Hopefully? You're not going to make them learn all this stuff now?
Right.
So Algebra II, how is the Algebra II?
So we use the context of financial applications, but we're teaching some Algebra II topics.
So just for example, how is it, how would you use it?
Compound functions.
Huh?
So, you know, it changes based on income, so the function changes.
Oh, yeah.
Amortization.
Amortization is a rational function.
I like the.
Mr. Bottom.
He'll go back to the probability in statistics.
The probability of him having a question is close to none.
I think the probability one, he has some authentic opportunities for that.
No, but I like the idea of being able to apply it in real life.
Right.
I mean, so that's always a constant battle for math people, is to try to get some application in everyday living. And it's there, it's always there, but I appreciate that, that's, thank you.
It just, it sounds like it might be a great adult ed course as well. I would probably take it as well, yeah.
The Algebra II, who, the income taxes?
The Algebra II, the way it applies to the income tax and, you know, I think it'd be interesting. I haven't taken a math class in years.
Wow.
I just, I just have, I just have two clerical errors.
Which I will hand to you. Thank you, I'll take them. Okay.
No, I'm sorry, I apologize because I keep getting messaged by the weather guy and still a blizzard, just let me know that.
Did you only cancel school?
Yeah, I know.
So what do you care at this point?
I know.
I mean, it's done, isn't it?
Well, after Friday, I'm gun-shy.
I don't mean to be a jerk about it.
I mean, after Friday, I'm gun-shy, jeez. You know?
But, but it's done.
It is done.
Karen, did you have a question?
No, 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 I just had one on each of these, just a clerical error that I'll, I'll speak with her about so that the corrections can be made.
I tried, I really tried.
You're in good company, Kristi.
I tried so hard.
As long as it's not a compounded error.
Compounded. Okay, moving right along.
Shall we take consensus?
Yes, yes.
ENF, Amanda?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, with the corrections.
Yes.
And yes.
Thank you.
Thank Kristi.
Okay, I, next is proposed action, I guess we can group the two of these together. Oh, I'm sorry, proposed adoption of revised policy 514121 on administering medication to students and proposed adoption of revised regulation 514121A, administering medication to students.
And I'm going to invite Kathy Nealon, our nurse coordinator, who's going to, she knows the background of this. This one, we invited her to just kind of share what the importance of this was and answer questions.
Welcome, Kathy.
And I knew we had Karen on the board and I wasn't going to try to take nursing 101, so I said, "Kathy, please come and support me."
Well, I'll do my best. Basically, the state of Connecticut revised the medication regulations in the last couple of years. We had these slated to come to last year, but we thought they were going to change them again this year, so we held off a little bit. And they're coming here, but they may change them again next year. So it's, it's a constant motion. Basically, these regulations added more definition to our policies and our regulations, so we added those into both. And they added licensed athletic trainer for administering medications. There's whole segments, as you can see, on qualified staff, qualified staff or staff, teachers, principals, full-time licensed social workers, physical therapists, occupational therapists, who can be trained for medication administration by a nurse if they are willing and the nurse feels they're competent to do that. So in addition to being trained for just regular medications, they can now be trained for administration of glucagon for a diabetic. They can, when a nurse is not available, they can be trained for an unknown reactor for a student who has a life-threatening allergy. And they can be trained to administer anti-epileptic medication for seizures. So that's been all added into policy, okay, and regulation.
This is any person, a teacher can be trained to do this, correct?
Teacher can be trained if they are willing and go, those three that I just mentioned, the glucagon, the unknown allergen, and diastat, they have to go through a training program that was provided by the state of Connecticut that we have available to us. And it's necessary to have those regulations now for children specifically who participate in sports. Coaches are also allowed to administer and now, of course, licensed athletic trainers are allowed to administer medications. We did also add, and this is up to the Board of Ed, it was added, and it is in the regulation part, page three, first paragraph.
Page three?
Page three in the regs.
Yeah.
That it says, we would like to add, because we're getting, as you just discussed, overnight field trips out of country and we have to have some flexibility in regards to medication administration. And for the, mostly those students are going to be high school students. And so we want to look at a case-by-case basis, when and if it is necessary to allow some of these children to administer their own medication. We don't allow that in the school district unless it is specific medication, EpiPens, inhalers, and their insulin and, one more thing, I'm totally blanking it, but there are, it's in the regulations. But if you're going on field trips to Europe, to other countries, some of these students have medications that it becomes ridiculous that we administer them. And for, for example, birth control medication, we have to take that when they go on field trips and we have to administer that individually to students. Some students are on, you know, some other medication that they may need and we'd like to have some flexibility in the school district between the nurse, the parent, and to determine if it's an appropriate thing for that student to take their own meds.
So under that example, let's say you've got an international trip and this is put into place, do, do you still require that the student discloses what that controlled substance is and that they're, do they have to sign off?
Yeah.
And take responsibility that they're, and family, also the parents, guardians, whatever, sign off? Or what's the process?
We would have to have a plan in place, they would have to have a medication order. The person running the trip would have to know what the person is taking.
Okay.
We already do that already.
Sure.
It would just, that process would still continue, it would just be that they don't have to come if there's a 10 or 15 students or eight students have to come or, and ask to have their medication.
Right.
And have somebody available. And sometimes that's not even feasible with some of these trips.
Yeah, that makes sense.
People are going on because they're living with host families, things like that.
That's true.
And so we have, you know, there's not really a way in which we would be able to even administer that medication.
Yep.
The other thing is, at some point, it's really going to impact money for the district too. And I believe we can safely manage that, money shouldn't be a motivating factor, but you're talking about possibly having to pay for a nurse to go on some of these trips.
So, so I just want to continue with this if I can. So I imagine this is state sanctioned in terms of the, whatever is the verbiage that, well, the verbiage that's, that we're being asked to add, is that the verbiage that, I don't know if it came from CAE or from the state or what, who, wherever, that this is, this is an acceptable practice for a school district to adopt?
A couple of things. There are school districts that allow self-medication of medications already in the schools, so people can take their own Tylenol.
Right.
You know, so it's up to the district to determine if they want to lighten that for particular circumstances. It's not state required, so to speak.
Okay, so it is, it's individually decided by a district?
Of course it is, that's correct.
So, okay, so again, though, the verbiage that we're looking to adopt, though, is verbiage that is in, consistent with what is appropriate for a district if you want to go towards this policy, that's really all.
Correct, yeah, no, this all came, much of it came working, obviously, with Dr. Valentin, with the school nursing group, but then also through CAE and other.
Gotcha. So, so I appreciate that, though, Kathy, that this is not, you know, there is flexibility at each district level. I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, that, you know, it's up to us whether we're comfortable and, you know, but it seems more of a pragmatic thing than anything.
And that was brought, like, Dr. Val, Dr. Valentin, the superintendent said that we have a school nurse policy committee, that we sit, we have a level representative from each level at a school and Dr. Valentin, and they brought this up as a needed issue because of field trips.
And, and I was just going to add that we're doing more field trips, I think, and also international trips that, than we've ever done, so that would support that. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Mike and Kathy?
I just have a question with, like, for instance, on page five of the policy, "Child with diabetes may test his or her own blood glucose per order," the board, not that one, wait a minute, let's see. "The Board of Education allows students to self-administer medication and qualify personnel for schools to administer."
What page are you on?
On the first page of the, of the regs.
Of the regs?
You know, I'm, how do we decide if a child is capable of self-medicating? Is there an age we go by, a grade, parent consent only? I mean, I kind of run into this problem with my own school and, you know, parents want a third grader to medicate themselves and I have a problem with that. So what does?
We have to, well, by state law, if the parent and physician state that they can self-medicate, they can self-medicate. The, the nurse has the right to evaluate that.
That's what I was going to.
And should, especially at that age. And she would, then, if she had concerns, she has the right to discuss.
Override it?
No, she has the right to discuss those concerns with the physician and the parent. The parent and the physician can override it. That's state law.
Do they have, do they have to sign something?
They have, the, it's a medication administration form that has that information on there. And we do evaluate that. It doesn't, rarely, I haven't, I mean, I've been here almost 15 years, it really doesn't come up. We may have some of that coming up more in a middle school. Diabetes, though, we give a lot of flexibility to diabetics based on their ability, every child is different, we look at every child individually and we have some, we've had children that are first graders that are so proficient in testing and monitoring themselves, we give them that flexibility to an extent. And then we have children that are in middle school and high school that still need some oversight, so it's totally individual.
That was my concern.
Yeah, totally individual. And again, if we had an individual who was in high school that needed nursing oversight, for whatever reason it was with diabetes, we would, we would recommend that going on a trip and we have provided nurses for some of those trips. Still do that.
Karen?
Just for consistency on the regulation, I noticed that there was mention made on page seven regarding medication errors and then again on 13. And it seemed to include everything except for the prescribing, the authorized prescriber. So if we could have consistency there.
I just, there is.
I know that there's a specific section that indicates medication errors and what's to be done. It's just in this particular, medication errors on page seven, third paragraph, will be reported immediately to the school nurse, the nurse, a school nurse supervisor or the school medical advisor and the student's parent or guardian. And if we can just add, because it, because later on in the regulation, it indicates the authorized prescriber.
Okay. Did you get that, Betsy?
So you're just saying, being consistent?
Right, yeah. And then, under the policy, so when you're, when you're giving these assessments and training components to staff, is there a return demonstration?
Absolutely, always, always. Anytime any staff person is trained, they have to provide return demo, demonstration.
And of course, if you don't feel comfortable that they have the.
Yes.
The competency, then you won't.
Right, or are hesitant to provide the service, we won't recommend that they do it.
Right, right. And the documentation of med administration takes place on the cardex or?
No, it takes place on a particular form we have and we use for documenting that they've been trained, when they were trained, the date, the return demo, what they were instructed in. It's a standard form that we've used for.
No, I mean, when you actually administered the medication to a student.
We have a medication administration record.
Administration record, okay, so you did have a card.
Yes.
Okay, and could you tell me a little bit more about what our liability is when it comes to administration of, like, an EpiPen to someone that really doesn't have an ordered EpiPen?
Well.
But it's suddenly, you know, it's a life-threatening issue and what have you.
Okay. Very controversial issue in regards to, we have, for the, your school nurses, they have standing orders that we can function by and if they identify an unknown reactor for a life-threatening allergy, which can happen bee stings, some unknown reaction to medication, they have the ability to, by that order, to recognize that and we have stand, we have backup EpiPens in our offices to deal with an issue like that. Two years ago, the state, or a year and a half ago, the state of Connecticut approved legislation that allows for qualified staff to go through a training program and if a nurse, if you don't have a school nurse or a nurse is not available during the school day, designated school day, they could be trained and they could be trained to recognize an unknown reaction and they could administer an EpiPen. We do train people in the district. We have, and we're in the process of changing it a little bit, but we have medical, we call them medical crisis teams, they're going to soon be called cardiac emergency response teams, but we have people on there that are trained in CPR and AED. Those would be your natural people to train for this particular issue because part of their training needs to have CPR training in it. So we do train some people for that purposes, but we are fortunate in this district that a good portion of the time, about 99.9% of the time, you have a school nurse in every school.
Right.
So, and, and that's key, but if you can see of all the responsibility that would happen if we did not have a nurse in every school, there's a lot of medication training that has to go on. So, you know, for the most part, we're always having a nurse in the school. And that whole piece about the qualified staff being trained for an unknown reactor, parents have the right right now to opt out of allowing their student to receive that EpiPen if they needed to for an emergent issue. The school nurse is allowed to do it, but the layperson would not be allowed to do it. So currently, we have to keep a list of names of students that parents say they can't do it. We are, the schools, the School State Nurses Association is currently working to get that overturned because how do you make a law to allow people to help somebody in emergency and then say to the parents, "Oh, no, you can opt out when your son or daughter is having a life-threatening reaction."
Could you imagine?
So, it wasn't really thought through and so they're looking at trying to change that.
How about Narcan?
Narcan, right now, we are only having the school nurses administer that.
Oh, the school nurses do?
Yes, in the two high schools. We, we started that in December and we have that available for use and hopefully we'll never have to use it, but we are prepared to be able to use it.
And the other question I have is, when, when looking at the anti-epileptic medication, I mean, I guess it's inclusive of diastat, is that what you're indicating?
Totally inclusive of diastat.
That's interesting.
Which is prerectum.
Right.
We don't have a lot of volunteers for that.
Oh, I.
It's a lot of responsibility.
It is a lot of responsibility and, and it's the whole privacy issue and things of that nature, yeah.
Right, it's, yeah, it's a lot of responsibility even for the nurse to be doing that.
Of course.
Yeah.
But that's, you know, if you have somebody that's in status epileptic, that means certainly.
We have it available for some students.
Exactly.
Yep.
So those were the questions I had.
Any other questions?
I am so happy I invited Kathy. I'm just sitting here like.
Hello, Jay.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, Tim.
Kathy, maybe you can just add a little bit about the parent piece as far as having students who might need an EpiPen. How many, from a parent perspective, how many EpiPens does a parent have to send into school? One to the nurse, one to athletics if they're on teams, and how it's prescribed to a student, not to a family? So there's, if, there's parents that have children in schools, even though they may be the same school, they need to send in separate EpiPens? And you could have two kids who do athletics, we all know the price of EpiPens now has tripled and quadrupled, so you could have two children and have to send in four EpiPens. And there are parents, and I know from even our free lunch, free and reduced lunch discussion, who are opting not to send the EpiPens because they just can't afford them.
Yes. We don't really have that big of an issue with them not sending them in. Where we do sometimes have an issue is that when they play an athletic sport. But oftentimes, we, we total, we, we do get those, it is a hardship for people and if we know somebody has a hardship, we will certainly try to let them take the one in the nurse's office. It is not recommended by the state of Connecticut, part of the regulation is that you do not do that because then what happens with that is it may not come back to you and you're sitting there the next morning without an EpiPen. We do have backups, so in a hardship, we will allow the student to go back and forth. That's an exception rather than the rule and it totally is a hardship, but it also is a safety issue for the child, so we have to, we have to try to balance both of those. And it really is very difficult to afford some of these. There's all sorts of research going on for life-threatening allergies, we're looking soon to do some, maybe an oral medication for life-threatening allergies, so there's a lot of changes in, in food allergies going on right now, diabetes going on right now, so hopefully in years from now. Right now, the, the intricacies and the severity of medically managing some of this, you know, is amazing to me in a school setting, so we are doing that now. And I know it is a hardship, but that's something we're, we try to work with, with each individual. Yep.
So for tonight's purposes, I assume we're going to see the policy in the reg three times and this is our first tonight, so we're, we don't need to take consensus at this point, but.
Move to the next meeting, under instructional.
Yeah, we'll move to the next.
No, we'll move to the next meeting under instruction.
And it'll eventually fall into our, uh...
Yep, consent.
Consent agenda.
Okay, Karen?
Thank you.
Clearly with the complexity of some of the, the students that we have and the medical issues that they're presenting, uh, it's very important to have a school nurse in every building.
Oh, true.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks Kathy.
Thank you very much.
Thanks Kathy much.
Stay safe.
Yes, be safe.
You too. Okay, uh, last item is, actually our last item's German. Uh, our second to our last item, two thousand fifteen, sixteen, school profile and performance reports for several schools.
Uh, yes, and we'll tag team on this. Um, basically this, first of all, as you know, um, and I put it in my Friday memo of either last week or the week before, this is the first time that this accountability system has been used. Um, so there's no benchmark, it's based, it, this is the first, um, point. As a district, um, the good news, the very good news, is that we don't have any, um, achievement gap size outliers. And that really relates to our high need students, um, which is very important because that's something that we've been working on through our focused monitoring plan at the special ed level. Um, and really, I'd say that overall, again, some highlights are, are graduation rates. Our four-year graduation rate is now up to ninety-three point two percent, which continues to tick up. Um, the state has our target as ninety-four percent, so we're almost there in terms of our target. Uh, we continue to also look at an increase in our sixth year, um, graduation rate with, um, students with higher needs. That has ticked up, which is great. And then also post-secondary entrance for the class of two thousand fifteen was higher than, um, in previous years. So we're seeing the post-high school experiences increase, which is very positive. Um, the students taking, uh...
Is that a generic, well, excuse me, not to interrupt you, but post-high school could be any, any higher education, technical school?
It could be, it could be anything, yeah. So, um, the areas that we, we definitely would like to see a greater focus on are the physical fitness, which I know, um, that's an area that Tony has been working on. And there's been some curricular changes at Lyman Hall in particular. And that came out in our audit a couple of years ago that Patty Purcell had done of our district, that there were a couple of programs that were not, um, that needed a little bit of refinement. So that was what they've been working on and, um, we're, we're pleased with that. We're also looking closer into the arts access, um, because we do see that, this is a, a, a new one and, and I might actually turn this one over to my, my partner over here, um, Carrie, because she did a little research on this one, because it was a little concerning.
Right, this, um, looks at the percentage of students in grades nine through twelve participating in at least one dance, theater, music, or visual arts course in the school year. So it's looking at what types of art, um, classes and, and theater classes and dance classes we're offering and the percentage of students who are participating in grades nine through twelve.
So the thing is that, again, um, we don't require students to take one every single year. And if we did, you know, that could, would only be more of a, a different challenge. So that's where I think we're, we're seeing that, but we wanna look at that more closely. I know that we identified last year, over the last two years, a, a growing concern that in particular, students leaving DAG, going into Lyman Hall, um, there was a reduction in students taking CTE courses, arts courses. Um, and so we've, we believe we've gotten to potentially the root cause of that. And so we might see some changes in that this year. We didn't see the same, um, challenge at Sheehan. And when we did a cross analysis, and actually I can't take the credit, it would be Melissa Isles in Counseling Services who looked at that more closely. She had the time to, to delve into that and I think we've gotten to the root cause. Um, when we look at our, our schools in comparison, if you take our two high schools, you'll note that their scores, their overall scores are almost identical. Um, actually, um, Sheehan is in, uh, has nine hundred and fifty-one point seven points and Lyman Hall is nine forty-nine point eight. The difference why Lyman Hall was ranked a number two school out of a categories of one through four and Sheehan was ranked number three was because of the outlier. There is a, an achievement gap data, um, or achievement gap between non-high need, um, or high need students and non-high need students at Sheehan. So, um, that is a, it's one plus one standard deviation, um, which we do have to look at that. And that's the case with the same scenario with Moran and DAG. It's absolutely, it's actually the opposite. Moran has, uh, been ranked a number two and DAG's ranked a number three. And again, it's the achievement outlier there. Um, at the elementary schools, again, um, the two of the four elementary schools had an achievement gap outlier in terms of special needs students. But as a district, um, again, the gap wasn't signi- it wasn't, uh, significant, so there was not an achievement gap difference there as a district. So what we've done, obviously Rob is right on this, as you would expect. Um, and so we're working, um, with our building-based teams to start looking at this. And again, we see that the focused monitoring, which we voluntarily signed up for, which many districts are still getting chased down by the state, but we chose to step up to the plate the first year. Um, also, we knew that we're gonna probably be only the resources the first year to help districts, so we decided to take advantage of them, because we know those won't be necessarily there in the future. Um, but we're really trying to look at those, those teams, not only at district level, but a school-based level. Um, so those were really, when you looked at the data, I mean, there were some other little differences, but the real main differences were, was in that achievement gap. Because when you looked at our two middle schools, I just read off the two, um, high schools differences, but when you looked at the two middle schools, um, Moran was six twenty-seven point five and DAG was six twenty point two. So again, we're not talking a significant amount of raw number, uh, difference between those schools. Um, and again, at the, at the middle school and high, uh, elementary school, I just wanted to make point, because I, Carrie did the research on this, the arts, uh, access does not get calculated. Um, it only is a nine, twelve calculation. So when you look at that and it says NA and we got zero points, but it also says zero max, because there's no points available to be, um, to be given. Which is disappointing, because we do a really good job, um, in our arts programs, at our middle schools and high sc- and our elementary schools, but we don't get any credit for it. Um, so that was just, I just wanted to point those out. At the elementary schools, as was shared, Yalesville was, um, a school of distinction. Um, and then our other schools, uh, Rock Hill, Parker Farms were three and Pond Hill was a two. Um, again, the two schools that were the three, which would make sense, we're gonna go back to the, um, achievement gap disparity. Um, so I, again, we're working very closely on these. The absenteeism was good information, I think we're doing well there, which, that was a lot of work, been dealt with that over the last few years. We've had, uh, administrators running committees on chronic absenteeism. We changed our letters with the help of parents, um, and, and the help of staff. Uh, we really went full throttle with the state statute, which I know at the beginning, as many of you know, we had a little pushback because we were just following the statute. But, um, we did try to modify that to help parents also, but...
So, um, and this is just looking at Lyman for a basis. I noticed that our college entrance and in particular persistent rates are really good. So that's awesome, but what was concerning, and I'm just wondering if maybe I'm reading it wrong, um, the people meeting benchmarks on at least one, one college readiness exam, our participation rate is great, we're ninety-six point four percent throughout the district and in particular ninety-eight percent at Lyman, but the P, the rate meeting is less than half. We're thirty-eight point eight at Lyman and forty point nine percent. And that just, and like I said, maybe I'm reading this wrong, but it seems to me that what that's saying is, is that our students aren't necessarily meeting the requirements for college courses as far as their knowledge base is concerned. I don't know if I'm reading it wrong.
Um, yes, I think that that would be, the first glance, I would, I would say that that's correct.
Okay.
Um, I think that that's an area that we're still delving into. Because again, that new, that whole college and career ready piece is a new factor this year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, actually, the, the big ones that are new are the college and career ready, the physical fit- fitness being really part of it. It, they always kind of tried to include it, but it was never part of it. And then the arts access, those are the big ones. Um, so again, it goes, it goes back to students being able to take the course and take, the course is, is positive, getting a student into that, but then to pass it. And we do do an analysis of those scores. Uh, we have seen some growth, um, which is a good thing, but we do do an analysis of such, uh, assessments like AP, um, and other factors. Um, so that, we, the teachers really look at kids who some, and, and also some of those courses, depending, I know that that's a different point, but some, some students don't have to sit for the exam either, they can choose not to. So that's another piece that we wanna look at, whether or not that factors into this.
I, I notice oddly that that's one of the areas that we don't have state rates. Because I think that that would be an interesting bit of information.
I bet you you wouldn't find that it's off very much. I wouldn't, anecdotally, I wouldn't be surprised.
Well, yeah, and I know that we've been doing so much work as far as not just preparing our students for college, but for life after high school.
Correct.
And to see those numbers be so low with all the efforts we've been putting in was just really... So I'm glad we're looking at that.
Yeah, and, and I think this, it was actually very, this, this reporter, and we kinda pressed pause, we had been working on, um, and we're still are collecting the data. And actually Karen Vayou is working on a model that we'd like to share with the board at some point, either later this spring or over the summer, is our s- balanced scorecard.
Mm-hmm.
And so what we're trying to do is we're trying to take that, pull it into, um, an Excel spreadsheet and then be able to visual, visually represent where we're moving the dial on each of those components. It, it seems a lot easier, I'm really downplaying the work that she's doing, because it's really not that easy, because a lot of our data is qualitative, not, uh, yeah, qualitative rather than quantitative. So we're looking at keywords. But when we looked at that, the good news is that it got us thinking about a lot of these concepts ahead of time, because the gentleman who put this new, um, system together came and actually spoke to our, our staff.
Okay.
Uh, Ajit from the State Department came out and spoke to our staff. And I wanted him to kinda lay the groundwork, and this was actually now probably going on two and a half years ago. So he laid the groundwork for our staff and said, "This is what you should start thinking about as a district. You're never gonna get it perfect," because he didn't even know the formula they were gonna use at the time. But he wanted to give us the indicator. So the work is there, it's just now we need to capture it and move it forward.
Sorry, I, I know that this is a national issue, this gap between high school education and entry into college and the remedial rate and all of that. Are we partnering with any of the colleges that we have around here, Quinnipiac or, or anything like that to see what it is that they're looking for from a freshman for math, for example? And, and where the disconnect is? Math, yeah, math just as an example, but English.
What we did was, we actually did a visioning workshop with some of them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and basically came down to the math and the English are the key, the key areas. It's the writing, um, predominantly, the writing, the research. And then it's also the mathematics. And that's why there's such a push even at the state level and I think even in our district is to really, while it's not mandated that students take four years of mathematics, that we really do encourage the students to take that fourth year, be it statistics, be it whatever it may be, to keep that, that fourth year of math going.
Because that's actually a good point. I mean, if you think about that, um, if, let's say your senior year of high school, you chose not to take a math. And now you're expected to take some type of an entrance, um, standard, you know, test for college.
Yeah.
I mean, math is, you know, if you don't constantly take some type of a math course, it's easy to get, to forget it. So that could be even an issue, you know, to why our math, you, any district's math scores could be, you know, bad, if you will. If that, that one year could be devastating for anybody.
That might be an interesting policy for us to look at, because we don't necessarily have to be led by the state on mandating requirements.
True.
I know there's more intricacies into it and it would require more thought, but just off the top of our head, if we're saying that that's one of the potential reasons for this.
It could be, I don't, yeah.
Uh, we as a district to take a step forward and say, "Okay, we're gonna mandate that fourth year if you wanna graduate from our high school."
True, and, and I think that, again, what we're finding is that there's, there's always been students in, in arts, our districts, we do require twenty-five credits, which the state only requires the twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we are four credits above, but we still have students, because now, which is the good thing, we did offer two credits from the middle school. We offered an algebra credit and a world language credit. Now we're actually, we have many more students. Um, but it's, it, again, we've been looking, again, the gift of having Melissa to be able to pull the, and call the data, that we have many more students who are, are going into their senior year already having, um, maybe only having two to three more credits at the most to complete. So that is, it's a good problem to have and it's a, it's a bad problem to have in some instances. It's a good problem, because, uh, it gives for those students who are inherently motivated, an opportunity to explore all those areas that they might not have been able to explore before. Another language, the arts, um, other things that were, their electives were closed out for them in the past. Now it gives them a little bit more freedom. However, if you have a student or students who are, uh, more closely in tune with their expectations, saying, "Wait a minute, I only have to have, take more, two more classes, why do I need to be here?" Um, that's a challenge. So we are gonna constantly look at that. I know that, um, now that we're going into our, we'll be going to our second year of those kids who have that ability, the full ability of both credits. I know that that'll come up in our discussions, uh, especially with the mice, the high school staff when we go to schedule this spring, is to look at where we're falling out with class distribution, course distributions. Um, again, going back to that eleventh and twelfth graders benchmark, that was the SAT this year that that was used. Um, and so we did do an exhaustive, um, research on that. And it was interesting, because we looked at it from a couple of standpoints. And I know Ken Daly, if he, he were here, but I know Mr. Corso's here from Lyman Hall, they looked at it from a, a point of view of a couple of things. First of all, who did they think should've made goal that didn't, um, so to speak, or reached that level? And then who are the kids who did blow the SAT out of water, out of the water, that were not challenging themselves enough in school? Um, and there were a lot of those, um, there were a lot of those. So that data, I know that Lyman Hall and Sheehan both look at the SAT data now, because we get it more uniformly, because they take it in school. But I know we also looked at AP, um, AP capability and we looked at their potential. And we looked at those students and we've been targeting students who have the potential, but would've never taken the course. They were taking maybe academic classes, not even honors. And so we've been really trying to grab those students into the fold. And that was one discrepancy I did see and, and we did talk to Melissa about between the two high schools, is that there still is a greater number of students, percentage of students taking AP courses at, at Lyman Hall over Sheehan. So that's a, a guidance conversation.
So you mentioned you were gonna look into this further, right, to get a better understanding of it? Could you, once you do, could you put it on as an agenda?
Yeah, sure.
For a follow-up at a curriculum committee meeting?
Yeah, sure.
And just more, if you can get it, and I know that I hate, sometimes I, I really dislike comparative statistics across state and national levels, but I still would like to see if it's available and if you guys could get those numbers to see...
The state data on SATs, I think we do have some preliminary data when it came out the first... Because again, it was the first time they ever did that this year.
Yeah.
Because it was all the eleventh graders, um, because that was, took the place of S back. Um, so they, the state set a benchmark, I don't know if they're looking to recalibrate it. To be honest, I think the math was somewhat in question.
Yeah.
The math was really off.
Um, that you brought up, one, we are looking at the AP potential very heavily. This year, because we've looked at it closely, um, this is the first year we're gonna have three sections of full AP, which is ideally, um, so we've got our highest enrollment ever, um, which is fantastic. But the SATs are dangerous ones to look nationwide. Uh, Connecticut's one of the few states that tests all juniors.
Mm-hmm.
So part of what you're seeing is a number of kids that would've never taken the SAT before too. So part of the results being skewed a little bit lower is because we're testing a whole demographic of students that would not have taken the, the SAT, because maybe they were not four-year, uh, college, uh, university work bound.
Mm-hmm.
So they didn't, they didn't have to necessarily take the SAT. So, uh, a lot of the schools in the state are kinda facing that. And last year, they drastically changed the SAT that was given. So that was the first year that that SAT was given, which was quite a huge role.
And we've chosen as a district not to do an SAT prep class, uh, during the school day, because, um, you know, for, since CMT generation one, myself as an educator and all my colleagues since then have argued that we shouldn't be teaching to the test. And that would only be the, the epitome of teaching to the test, having an SAT prep class during the school day. So as much as maybe down the line, if this is really attached to teacher evaluation, we might hear a change in, in conversation there, um, I will stand committed, you know, that we should not be doing an SAT prep class in our schools, because that's not necessarily the best use of our time.
Thanks.
Because you're teaching them how to take a standardized test.
Thank you for waiting very patiently, Karen.
Sorry, Karen.
No, it's okay. Um, I just would like to draw the attention of, of the folks that are here to the number of students that we have district-wide with disabilities. Eleven point nine percent is significant.
Yep.
Uh, in past years, it has never been that high of a percentage that I recall coming through. And, and some classes, or some schools, thirteen point one percent. At DAG, Lyman Hall, twelve percent. I mean, some of the other schools are less, but that's a significant amount of students. And those students are identified as having IEPs. That doesn't include five oh four accommodations.
Correct.
So that's a significant, uh, portion of our population that requires special education services. And I think, you know, we are trying to be proactive in that we have hired more special education teacher, teachers, we are looking at interventions, you know, tier one, two, and three. But I think, uh, going forward and looking at, um, our funding and how this is going forth, anything that we can do to support these students at the earliest possible time so that... that we can do to support these students at the earliest possible time, so that they continue to learn and grow as-
Yeah, the challenge that we heard tonight from Rob is that we don't always have them from the beginning.
That's true.
So, many of our students are coming in at later stages of their development, and that is often a challenge, when they've, they've already been educated wherever it may be, four, five years out of district, and then they come in and you have the gap. So, we need to look at just-in-time services also, and that's, that's really one of our focus areas. That's part of the focus monitoring plan, actually, is making sure we're doing kind of almost the intake, which you normally do, but looking at it from a variety of levels, because some districts, you know, intervention is not created equal.
No.
And opportunities are not created equal from district to district, so-
Do we have any demographic information on how many students have started with us from the beginning and then some?
Yes, yeah, I've been looking, yes, I, I've been looking at that data very closely.
Can, can you share that with the board when you-
Yep, yep, I'm, I'm just refining a piece of it, because I just want to make sure, Karen, Karen Vayou and I are going back and forth on Power School, because we want to make sure our numbers dive. As she said earlier, sometimes the state reports don't always, they don't always easily relate back to what we're trying to share with the public, so I want to make sure I don't put out a number, and then there's outplacements included, or, because we've been going back and forth on that. Because we've been looking at, in particular, as your, as the PowerPoint I shared with you, looking at the special ed numbers over time, while they haven't necessarily gone up drastically, the cost, our expenditures have more than doubled since two thousand eight. We've gone from about two million dollars to over four million, close to five million dollars in service, service costs and expenses for our special ed population, while the actual number of students has not gone up significantly. It's gone up maybe a percent or two. Similarly speaking, with our 504. Our 504 numbers have, they've kind of, they saw a spike, and now that we've, we've gotten on 504 direct, which is kind of like IEP direct, an electronic version, being more organized, we've seen those numbers go up also. So, we're seeing those spikes, and that's why it's so important to make sure that we have the Medicare, Medicaid reimbursements going in place. So, unfortunately, we were supposed to have somebody from Newport coming on Wednesday morning to do a Medicaid workshop, but I don't think she's, she called today and said that she wasn't going to make the ride. But we're going to reschedule, because we want to make sure we capture all of those reimbursements for the services that we're rendering, because it's at a much greater rate. So, that's all in that PowerPoint that I provided this past weekend, those pieces, but I'll add to it the longitudinal data on students who have done at least, I think we broke it down, I forgot what the bands were, by how many years they had been with us in succession.
Thanks. Mike, quick question, I, we have to get going here, but you brought up the SAT course, that prep course, and that just got me thinking. You know, I don't believe in teaching to the test either, but sometimes it's not a matter of teaching to the test, the content, but how to take the test, because sometimes now, of course, I don't know what the new generation of SAT is like, when I go by the old one. And when you think about it, a lot of that stuff that was on those SATs, kids never had, you know, we didn't have some of those, some of the things that tested you weren't prepared for. So, I think that's something you need to think about.
Well, I, I think I-
Kids can't take the test because of what, what is presented in the test.
I guess I understand, I, I def, I definitely understand that, and I think that, again, when anything becomes a high-stakes assessment, I think mindsets change, and I think that, similarly speaking, we're trying, we're still working with our, our teachers in general that do still give the S-BAC, our three, third through eighth-grade teachers, making them see the value in interim assessments, and potentially interim assessments, and also giving them an opportunity to explore how to, you know, utilize the assessment prior to the, the students taking it for the first time in March. I think we have, it's a slippery slope, because we want to make sure we have balance of practicing. I could see practicing a little, but maybe not a whole course, and I think-
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying-
And I know we're, but the only way that, right now, that they let us do it is really by doing those SAT prep courses, because you don't get access to the materials. It, it's very difficult right now, because it's money. I mean, they're, they're, some of those courses that you charge, they charge.
But even, but could you even offer up like-
Well, we do Khan Academy, but that's not SA, I mean, it's, what, what I think the prep courses, besides having obviously the questions, I get that part of it, but it's also the, there's, it's beyond just the questions. There's more to those courses, when you look into the capon courses and those, it's much, that's why you're paying the money you're paying. The other thing is, though, that we, we do do Khan Academy, as was mentioned, but we also implemented the PSAT, you know, for all the students, so that was key. So, and we, now we get the PSAT data in a better format, which is key, because the PSAT data never came to us in a good way.
I think that so many of our, not so many, but the, now the S-BAC are all, are they also computerized?
Yes.
You see, that's still an issue, because our kid, now I just heard from the STEP program that, you know, children who are presently in STEP did not achieve a certain number, because they didn't have enough time to take the test, because it was, is it a computer? Or-
The OLSAT?
The OLSAT was, I don't know if it was done computerized or not.
The OLSAT for fifth grade is done online, but for third graders, it's paper and pencil, but-
I'm already hearing that the online one, they didn't have enough time, and that's why maybe it's more open.
But it's a, it's an assessment that is a timed assessment to begin with, so you don't have, unlike the Smarter Balance assessment, where you have as much time as you need-
Yep.
-to, as long as you're being productive, you could go several times. The OLSAT has a time constraint to it. It, it's a part of that test. So, while students may not have finished it, they were given the amount of time that was required by the test to take it.
Well, just be prepared.
Yeah.
I do have a question about that.
So, I mean, this is the kind of stuff that, you know, again, can our, are, are our children ready to take that type of test? Not what, not what's on it, but can they take it, whether it's timed?
Yep.
If that's an issue, or the, the way the test is actually set up?
I think at the elementary level especially, because it's so brand-new to them, they are given the opportunity to, to really go in and play around with the different tools in, in the format of the test itself, and how do you expand the screen, and how do you enlarge the text, and, and to do all of those things that you can do to make the testing experience more personalized to you. And the teachers are very adept at doing that and having the kids sign in, so that it's not the first time that a child is seeing the screen look a particular way when they sit down and take it. You know, they're very careful not to teach to the content, but to speak the terms that they're going to say. Use the vocabulary, this is how the question's asked, this is how you highlight the text, and that part, that piece of it is, is very important as they go through taking the Smarter Balance assessment.
But as an aside, the fifth grade OLSAT, though, is-
Online.
It's supposed to be timed, though.
It is, so it's the third grade.
That factors into the score.
Right.
Because you can't get it.
Right.
And there's a practice test for all of them?
There is. There is a separate practice test that is guided by the teacher in terms of what the questions are and, and what the answers are, and does everyone understand-
For all the students?
For the fifth grade OLSAT, yes, and third grade OLSAT. And then, on the day of the test, they take the test as per the directions in the handbook, because you have to be very, read this, don't read that. It's a standardized test. So, from that end, while it's very feasible that kids did not finish in the time that was allotted, there is no accommodation for time extension or otherwise for the OLSAT.
I do have a question about that, and this is really more for, I guess, my edification than anything else, but, and I've never taken the OLSAT, I don't know how it's set up, but I do know that one of the test-taking techniques that you use is if you have a paragraph to read, you read through all the questions first, and then go back to the paragraph, which is generally allowed within the format, like you do this section, whatever it is. Is that afforded to students when it's online, just given any of the tests now? Like, are you able to, because that's, that's a test-taking skill, I mean, that's what you're taught to do.
Yep, for Smarter Balance, you absolutely can do that, because again, you, you don't have a time constraint. You have as much time as you want to.
But that has nothing to do with time.
No, I know, but in terms of like manipulating here, the que, the questions are laid out in front of you, the passage is right there. You can, you can do whatever you want to do that works for you.
What, Shawna, what I think you're, you're hitting upon is that that's where our staff that are working with those students who need those modifications or adaptations, need to make sure that the students know enough how to do that, because-
Yeah, I guess, I guess, but I was wondering if it was, it was even something, because I've done some tests online, just other kinds of tests, where you would, you would think that you would be able to do that, right? But you can't, you have to go question, here's your text, but so, there is an, an allowability for that, okay?
Absolutely.
Because I was worried that maybe we're limiting, we're taking away traditional techniques from students, because now it's on this computer format, so that's why I asked.
No, they made it very adaptable in that, in that nature. I'm not so certain about the SAT, but I don't know how adaptable it is in that regard, because, again, last year was the first time. But I, the S-BAC, they did really-
And the OLSAT as well?
The OLSAT is different. It, it, it's, you're not going to have a passage with questions to answer. It's a reasoning test. So, you know, you have a set core direction, you know, out of the five words or out of the five pictures, which one doesn't belong, type of thing.
Oh, okay.
So, it's logic and reasoning, so it is, it is not, you're not going to see multiplication facts, or-
Yeah, it's not content.
You know, read this story, answer this question, it's, it's not like that.
All right, cool.
Sorry to make it go up.
Any other questions?
No, but that's-